Thank you. Good evening. It's Tuesday night, January 14, 2024. We have a public hearing still open regarding proposed local law. A number to be determined in 2025. And so we're having this to amend. The law will amend Chapter 220 zoning to add terms and provisions related to that short-term rent. And we will leave that open if there is anybody from the community who would like to address the council regarding this public hearing. The hearing is open. I think she's going to come and turn your microphone.
That sounds like a good plan.
So we ask you just to identify your name and your address for us, please.
I'm Dr. Christine Thurlo-Briner, and I live at 425 Glenn Street, apartment 221.
Great. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm delighted to be before the council here. And I've followed with great interest your activity. In the last two years, I moved here in the summer of 2022. And I moved here after a long academic career retiring from the University of Massachusetts in Boston. And because you don't know me, I want you to understand that the comments I make tonight are not only comments as a resident who cares about the community and who chose to move here in my retirement because of the kind of community this is. I also have a master's in urban affairs and a PhD in public and urban administration. And I spent my academic life training public administrators of the next generation.
It's kind of work for us.
Well, I am. I'm here tonight. And this is my work. I knew of Glens Falls, if I could just take the privilege of a moment, because my mother grew up here and my grandparents lived on South Street when it was a middle-class neighborhood. And so I've known of the community for years, but this is the first I've chosen to move here and to live here. So what I want to speak about tonight is the proposal that you're considering about short-term rentals. And I have watched with great admiration how you, as a council, undertook a purposeful and collaborative process to put together your proposal. And I have observed your working in collaboration with the Warren County Commissioners and the database that they've developed on short-term rentals. And I've talked with my councilwoman, Diana Palmer, about this issue at one of her public meetings. And what I want to say to you is progressive, future-oriented cities that are interested in where they're going and who they are becoming are communities that get out in front of issues and they don't wait for issues to become problems. We're situated in such an awesome area, close to Lake George, close to Saratoga, and yet our own identity that is a thriving community where people know their neighbors. And so with this resolution, what I see you doing is getting ahead of something that may not be an immediate problem, but we only have to look to our neighbors in Saratoga and in Lake George to know what can happen if you don't get ahead of the problem. And so I think that it's been important that you followed many of the recommendations of the National League of City. And it's interesting that you are considering this at the very same time that the New York State Legislature has enacted legislation around short-term rentals. And I understand from the Warren County Treasurer that she anticipates that county may have $1.2 million income from the new law that will go into effect on March 25. So the fact that you're considering this at the same time that the state is moving forward means that you have the opportunity to work with all of the people in the community who offer short-term rentals and not nibble away at them, but to say holistically, these changes are coming from the state and these are the changes that we in Glens Falls think are important. And I primarily see that you are prioritizing the integrity of neighborhoods, the respect for people who live in R1 and R2 areas, and additionally, considering opportunities in other parts of the city that may be appropriate for different kinds of short-term rentals. I think that our own community commends itself as a place to come and visit, but also people could come and visit here and visit many other exciting areas. Lake Placid has had a short-term rental policy for a number of years. And I was interested that they have a rather steep fine schedule for lack of registration. And I haven't seen the part of your bill that deals with that. But it's my understanding from talking with Councilwoman Palmer that your primary goal in having a fee for the permit is to cover the administrative costs with taking care of a city inspector going and seeing the facilities. When I lived in New Jersey and taught at Rutgers University, there was a tremendous problem with short-term rentals around the state and overcrowding in short-term rentals. I think that limits on how many people can be per bedroom or a maximum number of people who can rent in a short-term rental based on what the facility offers are things you might have considered, or if you haven't, that might be something you'd want to have discussion on. But mostly what I'd like to say to you is you're being proactive. You are representing a future that I chose to move to. And I think that some of the complaints about regulating short-term rentals are shortsighted. And I would encourage all of you this evening to vote in favor of the short-term rental agreement when it comes up for consideration this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome to Glens Falls.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment regarding this open public hearing? Now, hearing any? Let's see. Now, hearing any? I think, is there any common council wants to comment on this? I mean, we've had it open for a few weeks, if not a month? You don't mind? Oh, thank you so very much. My glasses literally just fell apart in front of me. Thank you so much. So...
You look good, bud.
Yeah. Thank you. All right. If we're not hearing anybody, then I think we should close. I'd like to, could we have a motion to close this public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. So now we'll move on to the regular session of the Glens Falls Common Council Meeting. We begin with the pledge allegiance, and I apologize if you're not seeing my notes. Does anybody remember who was last? About, we'll see, Councilwoman, yeah, good.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the heart, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll move to, we'll open up for a public comment. Anybody who'd like to come and address the council, please come to the microphone, tell us your name and address, please.
Evening. I've met a couple of you folks prior. My name is Charles Randall. I live at 24 Leonard Street, Glens Falls, New York. Ed, how are you? Haven't seen you in a while.
Good.
We, last year, we had a problem with, like, the property next door to me. It went through the court system with you folks and everything. Trash buildup and everything like that. The cops being called every day. It's just getting, it's getting out of hand again already. It doesn't seem like the problem, the problem has been solved. It's just ongoing. I have some photographs I'd like to share with you folks. You can take a look at those. I didn't get a chance to send it to you online. They have three pit bulls that get out every day, run around.
Is it new people, Chuck? Is it?
No.
Same?
Yeah.
12 years we've been dealing with this.
Yeah. It's still ongoing. And it's just, I'm at wit's end. I mean, you guys...
Come and see me?
Yeah.
We'll make sure we have a police chief there and we'll, you're right, we've taken the court, we've done a whole bunch of things. We've injunctioned, we've invoked the public nuisance law on this property. We pulled it out since, first time since the Madden Hotel. So please come and see me. Didn't know that, I thought we...
We've reached out a couple of times and we've tried to get a hold of, you know, code enforcement and it's just...
We brought it up in the most recent Building and Codes Committee meeting, and a code enforcement officer indicated that the person who was cited under the nuisance law was in jail at the time that they're trying to maneuver that. So it's kind of like we have to build the case again. So when the dogs are running loose, we've got to, we've got to get the...
Well, they're not licensed, neither. Three pit bulls, neither of them, none of them are licensed.
And kids are right around, you know, when they're getting out of school.
Yeah.
Those dogs are scary. I mean, I'm lucky they've seen me enough where they, they came at me, but they hold their ground, you know?
So we need to get, is it the SPCA? Is our dog, our dog control? So we need to contact them. We need to, like, definitely have the garbage, you have the pictures there, that shouldn't be happening. We can have that, the code enforcement go with that. And when we see drug paraphernalia and things like that around there, take pictures, take videos, send them to us, send them to the police, and, you know, we need to build a case again.
Okay. Yeah.
And we know that the owner is in a nursing...
She's passed away.
She's passed away.
So, you know, it's just becoming running muck even more.
And this has been going on for...
Taxes aren't being paid there. So...
So please come, come see me, Chuck.
I will.
Just call, call Bernie, we'll get you in, we'll get the police chief there, we'll get the Building Codes Department there. We, it is a terribly long process, and hopefully we're not starting completely from scratch, but I wasn't in the meeting, so let's, we need to address it. We're with you. I mean, we actually had, we took them to court and got, we knew that the fine wasn't going to come, but that's the process, right?
I know. I was here all four too, so...
Right. I know you were, and you were complimentary that we were addressing it for the first time in, you know, so I cannot imagine how difficult it is. Please come and see me, let's take care of it.
All right.
I wish I could do it today.
I know, I know. And I understand, I understand where you folks are too. I understand. I just, I have to get it out there just for my own peace of mind too.
I'm glad to be here.
And my tenants, I have several tenants.
They've done 12 years.
You know?
Drug, they're selling drugs there. Police are aware.
Well, they're not just aware. They're there. We have a long, we have a long history of addressing it.
I understand, I understand.
We had them in court, we had made massive improvement, but I have not since been updated, so I don't want to...
Okay.
Please come and see me right away.
Yeah, okay.
All right? I want to help.
Thank you, guys. Folks, yes, keep...
Can I keep?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Adam Vaynerd. I live at 58 Walnut Street. About March of last spring, I was here. Similar to those fellows, I have a neighbor that is a huge problem. And I'll try to be as open as you, but you are great. I loved it. 58 Walnut Street? So I'm going to, we're going to play a quick little game. When I think of, when you think of summer, like, what's a fun activity? Just give me any, any kind of...
Barbecue.
Barbecue. Okay. So when you think of summer on Walnut Street, we get biker gangs, we get guns, we get domestic violence, we get dog attacks, dogs killed, cats killed, drinking, I mentioned handguns and guns, right? It's crazy to me that I was here almost a year ago begging you guys to help me with this neighbor that I've had. It took almost, let's see, I was here in March, so it took March, April, May, June, July, August for Building and Codes to finally get in there and kind of remove them. But now, they're still living there. The police come and just knock on the door and the police leave. You guys have a house two blocks from here that's condemned and people are still living in it. There's five dogs, no, four dogs in there because they killed one of the dogs, which was fun for everybody on the street. I feel like I'm out of order. So we'll start. My baby was born in April. In June, they had a pregnant nine-month-old, or nine-month pregnant chick living in the backyard in a tent, in this disgusting backyard. I shared the pictures with you guys. You weren't here, you were on vacation, I believe. But they had a pregnant girl living there. And then, when the baby was born, two days later, the baby was in the backyard. And we called CPS, we called animal control, we called everybody we could do, and nobody does a thing. Nobody did anything. And it's still been that way. We called CPS, we called animal control when they were kicked out of the house. And animal control told us there was nothing they could do about the five dogs living in a house that was abandoned, which is insane. You guys are telling them to call these agencies, but the agencies don't do anything. I've done it. I've done, I've called the police, I've called CPS, I've called animal control, I've called Building Codes, I've called you, and nothing gets done. And I don't, I understand there's, there's laws and, like, they have a court date tomorrow from the Building and Codes, I guess, but my faith is gone in this, this system. And you, and you, you were talking about how great Glens Falls was. I'm a transplant too. My wife's from the area, I love Glens Falls. I came here because this is a great area. I work in Saratoga and I feel like Glens Falls could be the next Saratoga. I see the things that Saratoga's good at and Glens Falls has it. But we don't have any follow-up. There's no follow-up whatsoever. Everything we do, we just pass it on to somebody else. When I was here last time, we talked about CPS, you guys told me CPS was a New York State problem, it wasn't a Glens Falls problem, which is crazy, that there's kids out there suffering and it's not our problem in our city. It's nuts. And I'm concerned about, like, one of the craziest things I've ever seen in my life is since I have a nine-month-old, like, and I think it was like two months ago, second time his truck was getting repo'd, he went out there and the repo people allowed him to take a handgun out of his car. So he's standing out there with a handgun in his hand, just nonchalantly just talking to the repo people, who don't care, like, he just has a handgun in his hand. And then they drink in the summer and they just sit out there with guns in their backyard. This isn't like at 10 o'clock at night, this is like 10 o'clock in the morning. Because I was on paternity leave through the whole summer, so I get to see all of this nonsense. And I would call and nobody would do a thing, absolutely nothing. The cops did zero when we called about the guns, the animal abuse, the child abuse. Nobody cares. It's crazy that we live in this city that's, we're talking about, like, short-term rentals, like, let's have somebody rent somebody a house on Walnut Street. That would, that would cure the Airbnb, like, problem that we have. Come, come rent a house, come rent my house. See what actually happens in Glens Falls. See what we're really about. It's a shame. It's really sad. And I didn't want to come here and be mean, but the fact that my summer, first summer with my child, we couldn't be outside because they had this fake biker gang that had no bikes involved. There was like, maybe two people had bikes. They would just smoke, they would just drink, they would just be loud, which is fine. Like, I'm okay with neighbors being outside doing your thing. I'm fine with that. But the fact is, like, they would just live in this filth, drink, sit outside with handguns or sit outside, like, these young kids, like, and that's the weirdest thing about this. The guy's older than me, he's got to be in like his 40s, 50s. And they just find, like, these young gang of kids that throw on leather jackets and just pass around handguns on the front of, like, their house, like, the main street. It's insane. It's like I live next to a third world country. It's the only way I describe it. And I've done everything I can do and I'm just begging you guys to do something about this. Like, this, this guy, his, his situation sucks because of the pit bulls. I have five dogs, or four dogs now that gets robbing down the street all the time anyways. There are Gerbert Shepherds, there are Saint Bernard. It's insane. And like, right now, they're not allowed to be in the house and they're in the house right now. And cops do nothing. Nobody does anything about it. They say they're cleaning, but there's nobody, they're not cleaning anything.
So I don't want to interrupt you.
No, I know, I just ramble.
No, no. Look, you're upset and I'm glad you're here. Okay? So you did say that they're being brought to court.
It's not, it's coming out tomorrow, it's next Wednesday, it's a hearing at 2:30.
Is it the foreclosure or the Building Codes hearing? Because I know they have two.
It's a Building and Codes hearing.
Okay. I was told that...
It's a declaration of delinquency, of the conditional discharge. The house has been closed. They're not supposed to be spending nights there.
But they do. And I call, I like, and the thing is, they work at the dollar store down the street. They're just like, if his, I don't know if his truck hasn't been repo'd a second time, but they just parked the car and they just walked right back down and just live in the house. And they've been doing this...
First name?
Adam Vaynerd.
Adam.
They've been doing this since it started and I've reported it.
What's your cell phone, Ed?
518. Is this on the L tier?
Yeah.
Well, hey, you can write, I did one, let's do it the other way. Do you have a pen?
Uh, I don't.
Take mine. And then I'll give you my cell there. Okay? My cell, 518-260-5895.
And here is next, next one.
Right. And I understand, like, that part of it. But I'm just concerned, like, these people are the people that have always done, just, they do the bare minimum to get by. Like, they've done that. Like, we've had this argument before, conversation, the bare minimum for their children is ridiculous. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a thing. Like, you should not be, as a father, I couldn't imagine letting my daughter have the bare minimum. It's insane. And it's insane that New York State's okay with that. But they know how to do, they know how to manipulate things and they win every single time. I'm just asking you guys not to let them win. And I know it's complicated, I know it's hard, especially with judges, but they're going to manipulate the system and they're gonna get through. And then I get stuck with another themed summer. Like, every summer's a different theme. Last summer was the craziest I've seen. I mean, there was a pregnant chick, sorry, chick, woman. There was a pregnant woman just sleeping in a tent in the middle of summer in my backyard. And that, like, before my wife had a baby, it probably wouldn't have meant a lot to me because I didn't understand what the pregnancy does to a woman, but I could not imagine a worse situation for a pregnant woman, especially, especially after giving birth, we put in that dirty, nasty environment. They would drop this girl off at 8:00 in the morning, she would sit in that backyard until her boyfriend or whatever got out of work. And she would just sit there with a baby, like, a couple-day-old baby, just in filth. We ended up giving her, like, a care package, we just gave her a bunch of stuff that we had left over, but, and this sounds so messed up, the only thing that saved her was when her boyfriend hit her and they kicked them out of the house and they were no longer trapped in that backyard. I don't know how to do them after that, but apparently they had, the biker gang had rules where you couldn't do domestic violence. So that was, like, that broke the camel's back or whatever you want. But it was, it's insane that I had to live next to this. And like, I've talked to the cops about the guns. It's insane that, like, I'm walking in my backyard and you see people out back, just just walking around with handguns, rifles, shotguns, just drinking, having a good old time. It's crazy. Just two blocks away from here in a house that's condemned that people are still just hanging out, having the time of their life.
You've got my cell phone.
I do.
Call me.
I don't know what to, I don't know what to do with it. Like, can you change, can you manipulate a judge? Like, what are we, what are we going to talk about?
We're gonna, I'm going to try to come and help. I'm going to make myself more aware, like I've done with the other property there. We make progress, I can't, I don't...
And I don't know if he knows, but there's a job posting for Building and Codes Director. So all the work that I've made with Building and Codes, what happens with that? Was it Phil? Is Phil gone?
No.
Is he leaving?
Yeah, no.
So what's the Building and Codes?
It's the position above Phil. He's applying for that job and we're gonna, if Phil gets it, well, but he'll be here. We're good. We rebuilt the whole department.
Okay. Because last time I called them, they told me not to call them anymore.
Call me. And I won't tell you to not call me anymore.
All right.
And I will come to you.
I mean, let's go to my house right now. We can just go, we can go peek through the windows and watch them just hang out. I mean, she's, she's, the mother of the child was sitting there right now, smoking cigarettes on her computer, pretending, like, she's cleaning if the cops come, but the kids are just sitting around watching TV and she's just smoking cigarettes, hanging out. That's in our city. It's crazy. And the fact that they're not allowed to be there. Like, if I called the cops right now, the cops, and the worst thing is, if I called the cops, they wouldn't do a thing. It's crazy, it's crazy how little our police do when it comes to this stuff. I mean, we have the biker gangs, the homeless people over here and now, and like, and these people that are in a house illegally that they come and they just like, okay, see you later. It's nuts. I mean, I try not to grill you guys, but this is, as a person, as a citizen that sees this stuff, it's crazy. And we're up here talking about, like, rentals. Who would rent, who would want to rent if they actually knew where Glens Falls is located? Who would want to move here if they knew, like, the stuff that I have to deal with, the stuff they have to deal with? And nobody helps us out. I mean, nobody cares.
It's, I, I'm sorry, I, I'm...
I've been fighting this fight for two years. They said they've been fighting for 10. That means nobody cares. If I've been, if you've been fighting this fight for more than six months, nobody cares. It's crazy. It's absolutely insane. I said this before, and I mean this, if this happened next door to any of you, it would not be happening. If somebody was brandishing a handgun and just walking around drinking all the time and you call the cops and they did nothing, that would not happen next door to your house. I'm sorry. It wouldn't. But for me, because I get to be the regular Glens Falls citizen, it gets to happen. We get to play behind bureaucracy and red tape and all this weird stuff. And I get stuck. My nine-month-old daughter is just stuck in this house because I can't sell it because of the destruction that they've caused next door. It's disgusting. In the summer, it smells. They rent dumpsters instead of using garbage. And then the worst part was, the end, when they finally get kicked out, they just emptied all the nasty stuff from the house and you couldn't even go outside in my house because it smelled so bad. The flies were so bad, they were, if you would look at my windows, there were flies just stuck to my house everywhere. It was disgusting. And I called and I called, nobody did anything. And now I'm back here, almost a year late, still fighting the same fight. And I don't, I still know what to do.
I gave you my number.
I know.
Call me, call me when I get out of here. How's that? I, Adam, I don't know what else I can do for you right now. I break this moment.
Like, we can call the cops and just have them remove people from the house that aren't supposed to be there.
Adam, we're doing everything we can legally and we've got them in court, we have removed them from the house, we've actually evicted them.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm telling you, they're there every single day.
I know.
And they're there right now. And you're saying you've evicted them, but that you haven't.
Okay.
It's not an eviction, the house is closed.
But is somebody allowed to live there?
No, they're not supposed to be living there. That's what we're saying.
Yeah, but I'm saying they are...
So I think it's an enforcement issue that the mayor will have to talk to the police about.
Sucks.
And it will. I'd be glad to meet you.
The people are entitled to due process. So unfortunately, you bring a complaint, they get a German's for attorneys, we have attorneys, we have conferences, we're bound by the courts.
I get that. But I'm saying, if I was openly breaking the law right now, you guys would do something about it. My neighbors are openly breaking the law right now. And it has been since August. And nobody does anything about it. No matter what we do, we call the cops. I've had my old neighbors that moved away call the cops. They've made complaints to SPCA and SBS, SBA says they can't do anything. There's four nasty looking dogs. They're, they're just emaciated, just these mangy dogs. And the parents won't walk them, the kids walk them, and the kids are just getting dragged down the street by these big dogs. Nobody cares. They take poops in my yard and it's not like a normal dog poop. It's garbage. There's wrappers and just nasty, like, just human products in their poop. And it just sits in my yard, sits in all of our yard. So that was one thing I complained about, that they just walk four dogs up down the street like they own the whole neighborhood. Nobody does anything about it. You tell the cops, nobody cares. You're telling me like, we're doing anything we can, but they're in the house right now. Like, not laughing at us, but if they're watching that, they'd be laughing at us. Cause they're winning. No matter what we do, they're winning. Okay, you guys are there.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Not hearing any. Um, we have a report from our water and sewer superintendent, Bill Norton, and, and then a, a presentation from our city engineer, Jeremy Snapp.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the common council, Attorney Jeff and Emily. I'm here today to speak, uh, on the situation that we're having at the wastewater treatment facility with our main switchgear. On December twenty third, our chief operator, Chris Miller, called me and said that the plant was down without any power. And he, and the plant electrician, Mark Sullivan, went through the plant to find out what caused the tripping action of the main switchgear. Finding none, they went back to the switchgear and tried to transfer it over to our second line to see if we could get on the second line, dedicated line that comes in. Uh, when they tried that, the switch started to smoke and burn up, so they, they disengaged it right away so that they didn't get stuck with no lines to use. Uh, they then called, um, High Voltage Electric Services, came in, uh, did the same thing, got the power back on the line we were on, and then it nearly tripped again. They went, pulled out the buckets again, checked everything, and they noticed that the under voltage current was tripping everything out. So they disengaged that under voltage, uh, re-engaged it after being, uh, with their, uh, high voltage, uh, flash guard equipment and, uh, got the power back. So what we did then, because of, of the unreliability of the switch, and we weren't sure if it was gonna run an hour, if it was gonna run six weeks, seven weeks, we didn't know. So we called up, we have generators on site. So if it does fail, we do have backup power now. Uh, we will have to call in some electricians to get the, the high voltage, uh, generators, uh, engaged into our switch gears and our ju- uh, transformers so that we can repower the plant if that gear swi- that switchgear fails again because we cannot repair it anymore. So that's where we are today, um, with that switchgear. Another repair, um, is going to cost somewhere in the million dollar range. We are fortunate enough that High Voltage had a switch available to them that they were gonna use at, I believe it was a jail, another job that, uh, never got done. So they had it available. It will function in our, in our, um, uh, house, housing for the switchgear in our, uh, high voltage, uh, area. So they'll be able to take the old one out, put the new one in, uh, and, and, and that'll be reliable for the next several, well, two to three years hopefully, until we can do the electrical upgrade and I'll get to that in a sec. But they needed to get the funds in place so that they could start working the switchgear to make it operable for us. It'll be the same way that we have now where we'll have access to two dedicated lines. If something happens, we can switch from one line to the other. Now, the history on the switchgear is, when I came a little over three years ago, um, everybody told me that this was probably item one that we needed to take care of because we knew that the switchgear was unreliable. It had been repaired several times and failed several times. So when I came, uh, we had High Voltages come in, work on the gear, get it functioning so that we could switch back and forth. But they were told us that, you know, there was a definite lifespan for this switchgear and they couldn't tell me how long. So when the mayor said we had some arbit funding available for some of the projects, one of the projects we did was an electrical upgrade, design for electrical upgrade. We went through a, uh, procurement process for an engineering firm. Uh, Councilman Landry was on that, uh, procurement, uh, panel. Uh, we, we had, I believe, six or seven, uh, engineering firms that submitted proposals. We narrowed it down to three. We integrated through the three, um, and we picked right peers, uh, to do the electrical services. Fast forward now, we're about ninety percent, almost ninety percent done with the electrical upgrade, uh, design. So they're probably going to, in the next month or so, uh, submit ninety percent drawings so that we can go ahead and look at that. And then we have to decide, uh, how we wanna fund this project as far as the electrical upgrade. Uh, estimates are somewhere in the thirteen to fourteen million dollar range. And that's, that's not just for the switchgear. Those are for all the MCCs throughout the treatment plant. These, uh, MCCs have been in place since nineteen eighty-six. They're original. Uh, they're obsolete. They're, uh, not up to codes, uh, today's code standards. So things have to be reworked. We were able to get along with these MCCs for this, such a long time is because we were able to take different parts uh, from other MCCs that weren't being utilized anymore. We shut down the incinerator. There was a bunch of electrical panels in there that we could use the parts from, but we no longer have those parts available to us. So that's why, when we initiated this, uh, huge electrical upgrade. So that's where we are now. With that, um, as far as.
Bill, could I ask you a question?
Sure, please, anytime.
So this, the contractor who looked at this has a switch?
Correct.
New switch?
It's a, it's a, it's, it's new, never used before, but it's, it's an existing switch that he had. He was supposed to put it in service at another location, but it was never utilized.
Right. And, and that switch, if this hadn't happened, would have been included in that electrical upgrade?
Not this exact switch.
No.
Cause this, actually, this building is.
Switching it's something that.
This, 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 this building is gonna go away, so that switch is gonna be, go away too. So there's a whole different.
So it's a short term investment?
It's a short term investment.
But otherwise, you're down there forever running with generator backup and the expense of that and all.
And, and even if you get this, the switch that's in place, they said is unreliable, uh, really cannot be fixed again.
Well, you said that when you got here, you were told this was item number one. People knew this was a problem. And we did use ARPA funds to do a, a study, right, to, to get the actual grant, grant ready?
Yeah, the design.
I'm just wondering, in terms of long-term planning, if we've known this has been coming for a while, what were, were there previous efforts to start planning to budget for this in advance at any point? It sounds like this was not a, I mean, not a shock.
No, it was definitely not a shock. I mean, obviously I said it was. It was, uh, it was, um, one of the first things that I was approached that needed to be addressed. So.
So, well, the answer is yes. Jeremy's gonna talk about that. The council has presented the top six projects and needs, and that is one of them. So.
Are you talking about when we, we approved the bonding measures for almost forty-six million? But that was just, I think, the twenty twenty-three, right?
Twenty twenty-two?
Jeremy, I have the timeline on that, but, uh, yeah, I believe you're, you're.
Twenty twenty-three. It was twenty-three. Okay.
So that was, that, that made us eligible to apply for grants.
Right.
And funding. So that's why we needed to have that in place to go out and, uh, try and secure these grants and and, uh, funding for the, for this project.
Also, this happened on the twenty-third, you said? Was it at night or?
No, it was during the day.
It was during the day. Cause we had a council meeting on the twenty-third and we didn't learn about it at all. I, I heard an offhand comment from an employee and I think I sent an email on the thirtieth?
We were also getting, uh, emails from, uh, about unrelated thing, but with a clogged up line on current.
Correct.
Uh, and that, uh, resources were being deployed elsewhere, but never, I, I never got any, uh, notification about any of that. So we ended up with, you know, somebody having, uh, you know, over a week of, you know, open sewer, but we don't know why there wasn't a response.
That, those two occurrences didn't overlap. Those are two different.
They did overlap because it was at Christmas time that it did overlap.
I think what, what.
What I'm saying is, is mostly is that we weren't notified. I've said before, when we've had things that come up, could we please be notified when there's any kind of emergency in the city? That people on the council should know because we're hearing from the community. And we can't get the information out if we don't ever get the information.
Okay. Uh, I might have misspoke there. The, the, time wise, they did overlap, but cities, uh, water and sewer staff did not overlap. We didn't pull that crew off the Kern Street project to work on the electrical problem. If that's what you're alluding to.
I'm not alluding to that. What I'm alluding to is that we have an emergency in the city and council is not notified.
Well, the point I was making, um, was just that it sounds like this happened in the day of the twenty-third. We had a common council meeting that night and it would have been nice to have been notified just because we did get some questions and we had no idea how to respond to.
Well, I think at, at that initial day, I think it took us all that day and probably the next to line everything up and know exactly what we had.
Yeah, but just to be aware that there's a crisis going on, it would be helpful. Also, we weren't informed until I sent an email asking what happened and that was on the thirtieth. So that was seven days later. So, I, I just something, I, I think in general it would be better if we just had a communication plan if something like this happens so that we know. I mean, so that we can answer questions if our constituents ask us.
Bill, what's it gonna cost to bring this up? To model one hundred percent?
Thirteen, fourteen, thirteen thousand.
That's what I figured, yeah. Yes, that's, once, once all set and done, once these new MCCs are put in place, once this new switchgear is put in place, this, um, will never happen again because we will not only have two dedicated lines, we will also have onsite generation. The regenerators there so that, you know, we will never go through this again.
When the longer term solution is.
When the overall.
So you're not, you're not there yet because you haven't, I appreciate what you're saying.
Yes, oh, no, we're not there.
You're not there today.
No, we're not there. Um.
Can you?
It's roughly gonna take, you know, another three, four months to get to a hundred percent of the electrical design. Then we'll, then we have to evaluate, then we have to go out to bid to see what the bid is. Then you have to order the equipment. That's another whole issue. If, uh, I'm sure none of you are aware, but any kind of huge electrical upgrade such as this, you need these panels built and stuff. Used to be you get them between nine, twelve, maybe fifteen months. That's almost doubled. So now we're looking two or three years after you place these orders to get everything in and up and running.
Before the fires in California where all these institutions are just being blown out. So that replacement market is gonna get much more scared.
The decision to switch the, from one circuit to the other, was that something that we had looked into previously as the right course of action if this happened?
That's, that's standard operating procedure.
Standard operating procedure, okay.
Yes.
Okay.
That's why, um, there's two, uh, methods of thought process in water and wastewater treatment facilities that, you know, ten state standards or TR sixteen, which is the standard that governs these kinds of facilities. You either have, uh, electrical power that comes in, you have backup power generators, or you have two dedicated lines from two different areas so that if one goes down, you have the other to switch to. The problem is it wasn't with the power coming in. It was with the switchgear that would go from one line to the other. And like I said, that's original switchgear since nineteen eighty-six that we've had, uh, issues with way before I started.
So though, just in my mind, clarification wise, a million dollars to temporarily fix this problem that we have?
Correct.
And then hopefully that lasts a few years?
I, I, what we're being told in this, the high voltage, uh, electrical services that we use is utilized throughout, um, the upstate region. They've done work in almost every wastewater treatment plant. Uh, Rensler had a huge fire in their switchgear. They worked on that, got them up and running, replaced everything. Uh, he's done several stuff. He's done fantastic work for us, just getting this through.
But in my, in my mind, I'm thinking of, if it's gonna last us three years, you're telling us that once we get the designs done and bid and figured out how we're gonna pay for this, it's gonna take three, potentially two to three years.
Yes.
So we could be back at this again.
Yes. And I mean, if this switchgear wasn't available, we're probably looking at two, two and a half years to get another switchgear. And if that was the case, you'd be looking at running generators for two, two and a half years. They're, number one, they're not built to do that. And number two, these facilities weren't built to handle generated power for that, for that longer period.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, Chris Miller did an amazing job.
He did. Chris Miller and the staff there did a great job because every time the power goes down and it comes back, you have to go through all the equipment, make sure everything's good, making sure what tripped, what didn't trip. We have a lot of PLCs and cards and things, electronics that, you know, they don't like to have that in and out power, that, that surge. It can fry a lot of that stuff, but they're fortunate enough and Chris is, uh, smart enough and, uh, he knows that plant like the back of his hand, uh, to go around, shut everything down. Restore the power, then start bringing the equipment up slowly.
And we didn't have any overflows or anything like that either?
No, we didn't have any violations. Uh, power was back within four hours.
Okay.
There's been other instances where we've been without that power for the same amount of time or a little more.
Would you talk about the, the reason that there's no, or I'll say it and then let you clarify it. There's no common council resolution in front of you because the million dollars is the estimate. Uh, six hundred thousand dollars for the switch, between three and four hundred thousand for the generators. And the thing, we have a file, uh, we're putting in a claim with our insurance. It may be all paid for that. The three hundred thousand dollars that you needed to, um, to, to.
Initial.
To get the switch, uh, came out of money that you were under budget in twenty twenty-four budget with. And, um, and then if, if, uh, if the insurance claim doesn't go through and it's not eligible, um, then there is, um, then it'll come back, well, go to the Water and Sewer Commission. They'll make a recommendation to come to the common council. At this point, your, um, your and the Water and Sewer recommendation is if that seven hundred thousand dollars does need to to go to paying for the switch, it would go to the council for approval, but it would come out of the, um, there is a two million dollar reconstruction fund. It is not the money that is the, uh, three million dollars in the Water and Sewer fund balance, but that would be decisions made by the council with recommendations from the Water and Sewer. They'll have those recommendations for you when this project's done, hoping about one month from today. The goal is, um, that, uh, the switch will be installed first week in February if everything goes well. Uh, by that point, you'll, you'll have the final numbers. We'll also hopefully have an understanding about the insurance claim, whether the insurance claim is valid, if, um, and not valid, but payable.
Yeah, so we've been in touch with, uh, the insurance companies and their adjusters they're sending out and the adjuster take a look at the switch. Chris is going to meet with them and show them exactly, you know, what transpired, uh, show them the switchgear. I'm sure once he sees it, he's gonna understand. Um, so, um, those were the three kind of funding sources that the mayor had spoken to about how we can hopefully pay for this.
And, and when that's all decided, or not decided, but recommended, it will come to you guys for a decision.
Thanks, Bill.
Very good. You did a great job.
Oh, thank you.
We need to make sure we recognize what an amazing job you did.
So, just one more question.
Sure.
Previously, the switchgears had problems.
Correct.
Since you've been here. What were the repairs made at those times? Were there a few? Since you've been here, what were the repairs made at those times? Were they fuses or mechanical pieces?
They were mechanical pieces, those, those buckets that I talked about were racked out, repaired to the best. Because again, this is, you know, a forty-year-old switch that needed to be repaired. So trying to get parts for it, we were very fortunate because, like I said, Gus from High Voltage, must have a warehouse that's full of, you know, probably tubes from old TVs. He's got such an inventory that we were lucky enough that he had parts to replace these with. But just the, the wear and tear on everything else, just trying to switch from one to the other. We hadn't come in, do everything, we hadn't maintained it, we hadn't do, that was a new switch that was put in. It's just, you know, Gus was the nature of the beast. I thought we were, I thought we were pretty good. I thought we were gonna make it through till we were able to do the upgrade. I was as surprised as anybody when Chris called me and said, you know, we can't switch.
If I remember correctly, the last time, Ben, you may remember this, the last time this happened was that we got a call from Finch Prime who said that they were, so that was, that was the last time, it's about a year and a half ago. And that's when Jeremy came to us and presented the top six things. And I didn't respond to your email because I knew I was asking Jeremy to come here and that's what's next on our agenda. But just so you, it was an eleven thousand dollar debt. They called it a fugue, but it's just my layman's terms. But when we switched from three line to eight line, it melted the, that gear.
Yeah.
And, and that took eleven thousand dollars. And that's when we knew that the best thing for the ARPA or as much of the ARPA as we could to be used to design this because we knew we were borrowing, we were going on borrowed time.
Yes, I think we, we brought Gus in to maintain it the best we could. We did switch from online, everything worked perfectly. And then, you know, when you need it, it doesn't, so. I didn't know if you wanted to speak, you need to speak to the long-term control plan or?
If anybody, so, go ahead.
Just, just to Councilman Lattimer's question there about the priority about Kern Street. Back in two thousand twelve, the city entered in a long-term control plan as part of a consent order from DEC. They had hired CDM Smith to do an overall plan of the sewer system, sanitary sewer system and the combined system. There's, or seven combined sewer overflows at that point. CDM Smith came in, did the sanitary survey, they had fifteen, sixteen meters throughout the city to identify areas of the greatest impact of the combined sewer overflow. So when it rains really heavy, the sewers fill up and they flow to the wastewater treatment plant. If they can't handle that flow, it goes to these combined sewer overflows and goes out to the river. So the regulations of the, the report were to close off six out of the seven. The seventh one, final one that's still existing today is at the wastewater treatment plant. So they identified those areas through those flow meters where we would get the most cost effective, so to speak, bang for the buck. Trying to remove those flows, Warren Street, Glen Street, Dix Avenue, a couple of other, other areas that they, they took all that flow out of. So those were the prioritized areas and each year we still have thirty to forty thousand dollars that we do for TV. So we look at all these different lines. Kern Street is an extremely small line, it only handles that small street and really only handles that building. So unfortunately, we didn't get to that line until the problem arose. When we got there, it was an old clay pipe that had disintegrated, collapsed. Not only that, there was a manhole that no one knew existed. It had been paved over and buried, it was like two and a half feet deep down. That's how long ago this was done. So Dan Gerard and his crew worked diligently to get that going. I know it wasn't as timed as most people would have liked, but again, you said it happened during Christmas week. It happened in a line that they said was filled with grease, but again, that was the only building on that line, so, you know.
It wasn't a line that was filled with, it's a vegan bakery, so.
But it didn't have to be from them, it could have been from ten years ago, it could have been from fifteen years ago, it could have been from sixty years ago. It just means that that pipe is getting clogged, 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 and if they're using soap, if they're using any kind of surfactants, that can also just start to adhere to the sides of the pipe. And if there were any other buildup on that pipe, we'll just continue.
The, the thing that I've heard is about not just Kern Street, but Cooper Street, that there's been multiple failures.
Yes.
And that if we're just patching stuff and, and then saying a prayer, we're not really addressing.
Well, this, this, this long-term control plan.
Yeah.
Had three phases. First phase, as I said, was to treat those high impact areas. That cost the city seventeen million dollars. Then there was phase two and phase three, dependent upon how much of the flow was reduced. The second phase was to add two additional primary clarifiers at the wastewater treatment plant. And the third phase was to, to add two equalization basins up where the old DAS line codes were. And those were dependent upon how successful the phase one was. We have not been issued any violations or any kind of consent orders from DEC to go ahead with either phase two or phase three. So it worked pretty good. Our, our numbers had come down considerably, but I know everybody in this room knows. The intensities of the storms have increased dramatically, not the length, but the intensity. That's what creates the issues with us. If we have a two-inch rainstorm over a twenty-four, thirty-hour period, we don't see a bad flow at the treatment plant. We have that same inch, inch and a half of rainfall over a half an hour, forty-five minutes, our flows go from four or five million up to twenty million. At the thirteen and a half million mark, that's when we start to overflow and go into our CSO. And the reason is that is we let all that water go through our treatment plant. It creates havoc with the rest of the treatment plant, takes weeks if not months to get back. So that's the reason for that. There's also screening that takes place so that we try and do the least amount of impact on the river and the environment that we can by treating whatever we can at the wastewater treatment plant.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just saying when we have things where we're having multiple breaks in lines, we should have.
You're, you're absolutely like the sinkholes and stuff, and again, I'll, I'll allude to the fact that whenever we go to these lines, we either see that there was a bad repair at some other point. I know that that was alluded to. Or it's just clay pipe that's been in the ground for sixty years. It's not Glen's Falls, it's all of the Northeast, it's all of New York that have aged antiquated infrastructure. So this happens everywhere.
There's a certain point, though, when the patching the things up, which is our first line of defense, is like when you have multiple failures on the same very short line, that you go like, how much more is it to just go and replace out that?
Well, that's the same thing that happened on Kern Street, that's what Dan Gerard and his crew did. They repaired where it needed to be and then they chased it down and they probably put thirty, forty, fifty feet of PVC pipe until they found a good area of clay.
Yeah, it's, it's the same thing's gonna happen on Cooper, it's had like three failures.
We just have that one, that's what we did there too, in Farasco, we did it. We replaced, we replaced the manhole, we replaced the line, we replaced a catch basin, and we also replaced the hydrant.
It'd be nice to have this kind of documented somewhere too.
Oh, it's definitely documented, but again, again, the issue.
Just for like when, when a, you know, when somebody in, in the city is having a problem that you can refer them to, it's not something that we have where we're going like, hey, what are we gonna? So one of the things we could do is use some community development block grants to attack these things proactively and move some money in that way. That's one of the first things that's said on the CDGB thing, is that you can use money for water and sewer infrastructure.
Well, I, I believe that's the fundamental thing that we need is funding.
Yeah.
We know where some of these issues are, I mean, we documented, you know. Talk to Adam Kelly, he can bring up any.
I wanna see it like actually on something that's your point so that I can look at it myself.
I think you're bringing a good point, but we do need long-term planning for all of the EGA infrastructure, which isn't just us, as you said, but we do need to be planning.
And I think, and Jeremy gives his presentation, you'll see that.
And I think the mayor said at the last Water and Sewer meeting that we're looking at like eighty million dollars to, to have to bring the infrastructure up to speed. Isn't that?
In those, the total cost just of the six top projects, that wouldn't be everything.
And if, if you look on any of the, the BPA or DEC sites, you'll see them talking about trillions of dollars for infrastructure.
Bill, I wanted to say, I was talking about not getting communication. That was really more City Hall communicating with the council people, but in terms of your responsiveness, I communicated with you on both Thanksgiving and Christmas Eve, I had to bother you for constituent issues. For constituents that reached out to me, so I, I, you have been very responsive and I appreciate it.
I, I, I've told the members of the council this since I've been here. It, it doesn't bother you at all and I'd rather you get, get ahold of me and I respond. The mayor's, you know, text me at nine o'clock at night and I text him right back.
Yeah.
Councilman Lattimer.
I sent him an email.
I sent him an email, I called him right up because, you know.
It was ten thirty at night, I was getting bed, obviously they're calling and ordering.
The thing, the, the problem with texts and emails are interpretation. You know, sometimes it gets interpreted different ways. So, you know, I like to know exactly what we're dealing with, however, I can help.
During that Kern situation was a water main break and we've had probably fourteen this year, twelve?
We've had a, a, a lot, and so.
So maybe we can get a list together of anything that they, right? Because we certainly did know and our electric was back up and running and we were operating and, and your guys had done a great job. So if I, you know, if, if I, we could get a list together, Bill, and then we just send out that email. Because we certainly knew what we were doing.
And I think.
We didn't know, we didn't know if, if, if the insurance was gonna pay for it, we didn't know. By the time the council meeting had, had happened, we didn't, I had more unquestion, we had, we knew there was no emergency. We knew that we were back up and running and that everything was good. But we didn't, we still don't have all those answers. But I think what we should do is you and I get a list together because I certainly did know and I appreciate it. I, we should just share it and then, then we can't share too much, we'll just let it on and then they can, they can ask, okay?
And I think the concern in Citizen over there, our Kern, was kept up to speed about addressed whatever we did. We told them we had to get him up and going the best we could, and that was when you said that open sewer. And then we had to go take care of water main break because basically the water's the top priority, especially if we have the sewage fall. And then I think Citizen was very happy with Dan Gerard and how he.
Yeah.
He visited the site every morning, was explained to him what was gonna happen and how it was gonna happen. He did an amazing job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill. Since it's eight thirty, would you all like Jeremy to come back at the next council meeting or would you rather go a little late? I mean, it's up to you guys. We have a thirty-minute public comment and then.
It's a six-piece here. Don't wanna break back, but patient.
Try to be the brief, yeah. Good evening. For the record, Jeremy Schnebel, city engineer. I am here tonight to provide an update on a few of the priority water sewer projects that we've been bouncing around for at least a couple of years now. Just a brief history, I think everybody's got a list of those projects before then. I will run down through them all or, or their descriptions. But I did wanna pick up around the time of June, July twenty twenty-three. That was the time when the city was getting ready for its twenty twenty-three round of funding applications through multiple outlets. Anybody know Facilities Corporation also targets through the Consolidated Funding Act. And as Bill alluded to, the reason we were here at that time in front of the council was to have you weigh in on three bond resolutions that were, were in front of you. It was some pretty hardy numbers, you know. The, the priority project, the one that Bill spoke about at night tonight, is the electrical project at the wastewater treatment plant. That bond resolution was approved for fourteen million dollars. The second project that the council approved was a bond resolution for the city's drinking water distribution city. I think there were five or six different cities or areas across the city that contained multiple streets that had undersized water mains or low pressure, low fire flow. So the estimate for that that the council approved was thirty-two million dollars. And lastly, was a Washington Street, East Washington Street sewer separation project. And so these three projects kind of rose to the top of the list for the two, one or two reasons. Number one, just need, which the drinking water and the electrical project demonstrate. Third would be, the city had performed some previous legwork on the Washington Street project. We had some studies done, we had some planning done, we had a preliminary engineering report in our hand. Those reports coupled with the bond resolutions, coupled with a rather complicated application process will, will get your project in for consideration. There's no guarantees, but we're at least in to these funding agencies for, for their review. Now, just as a reminder, I think everybody knows this, but those bond resolutions do not obligate the city to borrow any money. Those are purely like a formal statement saying that the city has legal authority to issue bonds if these projects were to move forward. Just wanted to make sure that was reiterated. So in terms of funding programs, the funding cycle for twenty twenty-three as well as the funding cycle for twenty twenty-four, we've targeted several outlets to try to get some funding in place to support these projects, to advance them and to not leave, not leave such a burden on the city to cover the cost. Just a couple of examples of these places are Environmental Facilities Corp., New York State DEC, congressional directed spending requests formerly known as Congressional earmarks. And there's one other, one other thing I'll get to in a minute, but. So. The past two years, our applications for the electrical upgrades and the water distribution improvements have been, the asks have been a minimum of five million dollars. Unfortunately, we have not scored well on those applications. And there's a few reasons for that. Some are easy to understand, some are not. I think the first one is that mean household income. There was a EFC recently adopted, I forget the exact document, but I can get, get you that information, that reevaluated what the city's mean household income is. And if you were, if the city scored at eighty percent of the state's mean household income, then they were considered a disadvantaged community and were given some preferential treatment when it came to funding for projects like this. It's good news and it's bad news, the city is no longer considered a disadvantaged community because the mean household income is up. But it does. But it does take away that, that extra benefit of scores. Additionally, it takes away some of the long-term financing at zero percent. We can still get it. It's not at zero, but it's, it's lower than your rates on the street. So sort of the hard element of that to understand specifically when it comes to the electrical project is that we felt like we, we had a solid application. We demonstrated what was going on. We made it very clear that this is forecasted and if this plant goes down, you know, we're going to have some serious issues, not just for our community, but the surrounding communities that Glens Falls. And the response we got as to why we didn't score well on that is that it didn't necessarily, it wasn't considered a water quality project. It's an electrical project. Yeah, and it's, it's hard to fathom that.
Let's see what this stuff starts going to.
Yeah, right. Exactly. I mean, that's the, that's the natural reaction to that. It's how can it not be a water quality project? If we don't have the electricity, the Hudson River is in trouble. So we're working through that, trying to find some other avenues that might increase our chances. But I'll get, I'll get to that in a moment. On some of the good news, we did have some success, you know, over the past two years. And I'll briefly describe those. The first one, in October of twenty twenty-two, the city was notified of a wastewater treatment plant asset management program that we were selected for. It was a program conducted by EFC. And fifty communities were chosen throughout the state. This is a program that helps municipalities carry out procedures, assess inventory, assess values, forecast maintenance, forecast replacements. And I think it's a great thing that, to have that in place. Now again, that was October of twenty-two. It was a three-phase program. Glens Falls fell into phase three. So just now we're starting to see the wheels turn on that. So we're opening gates of traction this year to get that asset management program completed. A second grant that was secured was, I think it was early twenty-four, late twenty-three, was a thirty thousand dollar DEC grant that was secured by Warner County Soil and Water. This had to do with some drainage issues in the third ward. And at this point, that grant has been secured. Barton and Judas is on board. City's retaining them to do the planning and engineering study. And according to Warner County Soil and Water, additional DEC grants are expected to become available for, for that kind of work. So we'll be keeping tabs on that.
Jeremy, have they completed the engineering study or they've been retained to do it?
They've been retained. There's been a sidewalk with Barton and Judas showing them the areas. The Water and Sewer Department compiled a bunch of sewer TV footage and reports of that footage. I think Barton and Judas came and picked that up somewhere between Thanksgiving and Christmas. So they're reviewing that, that information now. And I expect them to come back with a game plan, you know, in the coming weeks.
Could you please just keep me in the loop about that? I get asked about that on a weekly basis.
Sure.
Thank you.
Add that, add me to that list, too. It's been hanging out there for a very long time.
It is. Okay. Barely than just a few more minutes here. Another win, Congressional Directed Spending. The city submitted requests to our local representatives, Senator Schumer, Senator Jonesbrand, and Congressman Sispana. And the asks for those were, the request was for the wastewater treatment plant electrical and the city water distribution upgrades, both ask a five million dollars. I mentioned that earlier. We got word in August of this year that Senator Schumer and Jonesbrand earmarked one million dollars for the water sewer, or excuse me, the water distribution system upgrades. So it's, it's a win, but it's not a ton. Still puts a large share on the city.
One million of thirty-two million.
One million of thirty-two million. Or what we, what we did was we, we took that thirty-two million, we split it up into the five project areas. So if we wanted to take on one, one section of town, get that, get that done, you could look at it as one million out of five million.
Okay, okay.
Yeah. It was one million, but it was towards the water, not the electrical.
Right, yes.
Thank you.
Yep. And then lastly, just, just before Christmas here, the city was notified by DEC that the city was awarded one million dollars of a water quality improvement grant for the Washington Street, East Washington Street sewer separation project. So if I was to characterize what these funding agencies are targeting, it's quantifiable, highly visible water quality projects, sewer separations, emerging contaminants, you know, things that pollutes to the rivers or water bodies. You know, it's just, that's where their sights are set right now. Drinking water, it's always important, but it just, we haven't been successful there yet. And the electrical is somewhere in between water quality and, I don't know. So thoughts is, we have some, some money that's awarded. But my, my plan is to get with our GATIS, who's been helping us along with some of these applications and giving some guidance, is to see, you know, can we take the million dollars and advance some design work? Can we get some project shovel ready? You know, that, that with Washington Street, the water project, you know, we've got a couple right there. We've got to check into the program guidelines and see if that's eligible. But the plan I'm doing is early first quarter this year. And lastly, for the electrical, you know, because the funding doesn't seem imminent, we may want to go in with the financing application and just get, get the project approved for the very low interest, long-term financing and see what those kind of, what we're facing with those kind of numbers and how we may or may not apply it to, to Bill's project. At this point, I don't know if we can, well, I'll stop right there. Anybody have any questions?
You sort of alluded to what I was going to ask. So it sounds like we're trying to get this grant funded rather than bond, if possible, most of these, obviously.
Impossible, yes, yeah.
But it also sounds like we didn't, we're not successful with that. So I'm just wondering what on this list can wait for us to keep trying? And what do you feel, other than you mentioned the circuit or the electrical issues, is there?
Yeah, I think it's a, I think we can, I have resigned to the fact that the electrical upgrades is just, it's just not going to score when these people that review it or go down, go down checking their boxes. It just doesn't check the boxes. But that, that doesn't mean, we shouldn't be pursuing other, other things. So it's, it's kind of, these projects are sort of separating themselves now of ones that are getting some money, albeit twenty percent of what the cost might be versus the electrical, which is getting zero at the moment.
But if you can take that million dollars that, that's been earmarked and get plants ready and able to, that helps. You know, that's one of the big things that they always talk about is like, where's your land?
Shovel right.
So you're playing.
Yeah.
So.
I also spoke to the governor this morning very quickly this afternoon and Dan Ren, the governor's assistant, and they're trying to get me to contact to EFC to explain the current, so thank you for the documents you've given me about how this really is a water issue, although it's easy if you're just looking vaguely at the application and it says it's an electrical thing. It's an electrical thing, type, type of water sewer, that's right. So we're going to set up a meeting and see if we can get them to reconsider or re-understand deeper. And so thank you for getting me that document, too. Hopefully we get some.
Yeah.
Just, just with the water infrastructure, is that replacing lines coming from the mountain?
No, that's, that's distribution, which is within the city limits. There is a, there is a project down there, I think it's number three, that is a raw water transmission assessment, which would take a look at the area of our watershed all the way to the water filtration plant.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Committee reports, Councilman Park.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll be reaching out to our finance committee members about scheduling some meetings. So please look forward to that. Also, I wanted to thank Councilman Lapham sent out an email asking for other thoughts and suggestions about what we should look at as a finance committee. And Councilman Lapham had some suggestions. And if anyone else does, please email me and we'll add it to the list. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman, our committee reports, Councilman Dan.
Well, this is going to be beautiful. We had an hour or so with Jeff, so first of all, what he was doing, trying to do was get all these grants and everything else together in order to send all the, anything out. That is a good half hour of what's going on.
Sure.
After that is PCO concerning the, where to put the chargers. You know, this field is going to have some, there's still some doubts about other areas. I guess it's going to be near the developer and that. And I think there's one down there by D W. So I guess that's all gone through. And then we're dealing with old cars going from a nineteen ninety-four Lexus down to a two thousand seventeen Ford. So we don't know where they are or what they're at. I don't think I've seen too many police cars running around with a two thousand fourteen Ford Fusion. So I, maybe they just put it in the market, can't remember what it was. But after that, I'm not about as much as I can do over here.
Thank you.
But the big thing was getting grant line, getting energy lined up and getting ready to send off. We've been working on this for a while.
Thank you. Councilman Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. The Labor and Personnel Committee is awaiting the scheduling of a mediator that will be brought in to continue the negotiations with the city's CSEA union. I hope that that meeting would be scheduled before the end of this month.
Thank you. Councilman McPhee?
The Building and Codes Committee met to continue discussing the short-term rental regulations that are on this agenda for tonight. We also discussed ways to get information out about the inspection programs. And Councilman Lapham had a suggestion about putting information in mailings that go out anyway, like maybe the water sewer bills or things like that. So I think Aaron Worf will be looking into that. That was it.
Thank you. Councilman Lapham?
Technology Committee will be meeting on Thursday, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gooden? Thank you. Under voice vote, there are three resolutions any of the council would like to pull for discussion? Under voice vote, one is a resolution to approve the minutes of the December twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting of Glens Falls County Council. Two is a resolution to accept the clerk's monthly and PVB report. And three is a resolution to accept the clerk's year-end, end of year report. Do we have a motion to?
Yes, a vote.
On favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Under roll call vote, are there any votes that the council would like to pull for discussion?
Yes, I would like to pull five for discussion.
We need to pull four as well because the seeker needs to be down to progress.
Okay, so four and five, please.
Okay. Any others? Not hearing any? The number, let's see, under roll call vote, we have Resolution Six to rescind the city resolution number four, five, four, dash twenty-four, two thousand twenty-four, Resolution number five, oh, eight, dash two, zero, twenty-four, to enter into a temporary easement between the city of Glens Falls and Larry W. Klute for the property located at thirty-five Arlington Street, Glens Falls. Seven is a resolution authorizing community development annual payments in the amount of four thousand nine hundred sixty-one dollars and sixty-one cents to pay for a portion of the community development director's salary, to pay for the program deliberative administrative costs to consultants and rehabilitation program, to pay for the lead-based, lead-based paint testing following completion of the work in the city's rehab program. Eight is a resolution to decrease revenue code A, five, six, nine, nine, zero, dash twenty-two hundred equipment by seventeen thousand four hundred and five dollars and increase A, four, five, nine, eight, one, dash four, four, seven, nine, other contracted services by seventeen thousand four hundred and five dollars to purchase electronic signage for city parking garage. Nine is a resolution to decrease A, one, one, two, one, zero, dash one thousand personal services by three thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars and increase A, one, two, A, one, four, two, zero, dash four, four, eight, three, legal services by three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars, fifty-five dollars to pay for the city legal representation with regard to personnel matter. Ten is a resolution to approve, to carry forward balances from twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five in various police department budget lines. Eleven is a resolution to amend initial resolution number four, seven, two from November twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-four, common council meeting to include water and sewer rates, fees, and charges for twenty twenty-five. Twelve is a resolution to approve a transfer of funds between water and sewer postage budget to the central mail budget twenty twenty-five to cover the cost of large mailings and to transfer nine thousand dollars from F seven, F seven, eight, three, one, zero, dash four, three, dash, uh, four, three, two, seven, for nine thousand dollars from account G, seven, eight, one, one, zero, dash four, three, two, seven, and central mail account A, one, one, six, seven, zero, dash four, three, two, seven. Thirteen is a resolution to approve encroachment permit number one, dash twenty, twenty-five for the Charles Wood Theater, two thousand, or two oh seven, Glen Street, Glens Falls to block off several parking spaces in front of the theater on January twenty-four from nine thirty a.m. to noon for the school matinee. Fourteen is a resolution to decrease A, one, one, two, one, zero, dash one thousand personal services by one thousand six hundred and twenty dollars and increase A, one, one, six, eight, five, dash two, zero, two, uh, three, zero, legal services by one thousand six hundred and twenty dollars to pay for prezi, business for teams and design software to aid communications director as well as other city departments. Fifteen is a resolution to approve the warrant. Do we have a motion for a roll call vote?
A vote.
So, roll call vote, please.
Councilman Larch Park?
Yes.
Councilman Danny?
Yes.
Councilman Downey?
Yes.
Councilman Landry?
Yes.
Councilman Palmer?
Yes.
Councilman Laffam?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Gooden?
Yes.
Thank you. And four was a pulled resolution, so, uh, Resolution Four is a resolution to approve the seeker negative declaration determination for proposed changes to chapter 220 zoning for short-term rentals, uh, and Karen, did we, uh, pone that, or, uh, well, and then Resolution Five, did we talk about them separately or together? Do it together. Resolution, uh, Five is to adopt the local law, uh, uh, XXX, dash, 2025, to amend, uh, the 220 zoning and to add the terms and provisions outlined in the relating to short-term rents. Diane?
Yes, so I wanted to bring this up for discussion with the council, for, uh, for this reason. There was one remaining, remaining item that the council was having differences with the community on, and that was the sunset clause, um, which initially we had gotten an estimate from Warren County when they were, Warren County Planning, when they were helping us prepare this, and they said that five years for a sunset clause, um, was a conservative estimate and a starting point. Councilman Landry had requested that we reduce that to two years, and initially Councilman Lapham felt that he could not, uh, move from five years, so we were there for a little while. Then at our last meeting, our last committee meeting, Councilman Lapham agreed to, agreed to four years, it's kind of a compromise. So that's what you see here, that's what we publicly noticed. I did call Councilman Landry and have a discussion with him and let him know, um, you know, that that was where we were, and I think initially you were thinking that that might be okay, but then you talked to constituents further, and you felt your constituents really wanted it to be three years. So Councilman Landry reached back out to the committee members yesterday, right? Was yesterday?
Mm-hmm.
I had a discussion with Councilman Lapham, and he said in the interest of moving this forward, he would agree to the three years. Um, the problem is we publicly noticed four years. So, we have, these are our choices. We can bring this as it is to a vote with a four-year sunset period. Um, if we wanted to put an amendment on the next agenda to amend it to three years, we could. Or we could table this and re-notice it with a three-year sunset period if we wish to do that. Um, so I guess I would like to ask the council members what you would like to do. Uh, from our discussions at committee, it sounded like most of us were not as firm about it, um, we would have been okay with three or four, but I know you feel strongly, Councilman Landry, about three. So I, I want to open it for discussion and see what the rest of the council would like to do.
I think we, well, the, our group, we said three, and, um, I, I mean, how much more would it be to pass this and then turn around and, I mean, it's, that's a lot of...
You should probably table it, yeah.
Right.
Just re-notice.
Right.
And put the correct number in on the sunset clause.
I would be.
That would be the best practice.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, and in fact, it has been a good time, and I, I really appreciate what the committee did. I think they did a good job with the, with the law that we're about to put into place. Um, I think it was well thought out. Um, it was funny, I had a telephone call today with Ethan Gaddy, and I talked about that. That wasn't what he called me about, but that's what we talked about. And he, he said that, his comment to me was is, is the five years is kind of the standard, but every community may have some different reason why they want to do that. And I had a lot of public outcry from people who lived around, uh, active, short-term rentals in the second ward. So, um, I really appreciate the reconsideration, um, I think that the three years, uh, I know that the three years has satisfied the people in my ward that did it, and that it would be good for the community to do that. The, the object of this short-term rental law was to improve the quality of life in Glens Falls, and I really felt, and some of my constituents felt, that when you start talking about quality of life issues, you want to talk about them so that they're happening now, not five years down the road. And so I think this is a good compromise, I think it's a good law, um, uh, law and code to have, and I thank the committee for the work they did.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we had a very good process, we got a lot of public input, we did a survey, we did a, a community meeting at the library, we've had three public hearings, um, and we've had a lot of discussion on all the input we received. We got data from Warren County Treasures, Warren County Planning, the Warren County Housing Need Study, we looked at what other communities have done, so we really did put a lot of thought into this, this was just that last, um, issue, and I'm grateful that the council members were able to compromise. Uh, so, I think if we can make that change, I believe we're all in agreement, and so we'll be able to put this forward in agreement altogether. So let's just table it with the understanding that can we not have another, are we not having another, or do we, we need to have another public hearing because we're changing it, or?
No, so you've had public hearing, you've commented on that issue, you don't have to, but you just need to re-notice it.
Just re-notice it. Yes, we have had comment on the, on the sunset period during public hearings already. Okay, so we'll plan to have this on the next agenda for a vote with the council. Okay.
I'll give you a motion for a debate. In a second.
Table four and five, because the four is the seeker relative to that one.
So we've got a first, we've got a second, so roll call vote, please, on tabling, uh, Resolutions Four and Five.
Councilman Lawrence Clark?
Roll call.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Councilman Downey?
Yes.
Councilman Landry?
Yes.
Councilman Palmer?
Yes.
Councilman Laffam?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Gooden?
Yes.
Thank you. Old business, Councilman Clark, by the way. Councilman Downey?
I haven't.
Councilman Landry?
Yeah, always has, so.
I'd like to thank all the city individuals who spent many hours of work over the last year for sur, you know, working, pursuing the work of a short-term rental code for the city. Um, as I just said, I think it's a very, very important issue. Um, hard things take lots of work and lots of work to put into this, and I think that the entire council and the mayor represented the city well. Thank you. Old business, Councilwoman Palmer?
Um, I noticed, I, I thought of this because we have the resolution regarding the water sewer fees on the agenda. Did we ever get the study done to look at the structure and water sewer?
Yeah, we had, we had one done and then went halfway through the second one, and I'd be glad to share it with you, the water sewer, so they, they, when they did the study, didn't show anything that I had hoped, and we said, look, we, we really want to know, we want to compare us with other communities, see, uh, the gentleman, uh, is not done with the studies, but came to the Water and Sewer Commission, showed them a draft, they said we would like more done, so don't have anything to share with you right now, but I could share with you the draft as it's, as it's being done.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, I'd be interested.
We've asked him to do more, which has slowed it down just a little bit.
Okay.
Absolutely, it's coming.
Yeah, and then just to pick up on the, um, Councilman Clark, your committee report about the finance committee and the presentations we sought to make, I, I would just, I know you mentioned long-term debt as one of the goals, and I would just like us to consider the impact of we have to bond from all of these water sewer infrastructures. What is our plan for managing that long-term debt?
And, you know, we always talk, we always talk about the general fund, we sometimes forget about the water and sewer fund.
Right.
And that is very, that's critical.
Right.
To, uh, the city's operations, so that's, so absolutely.
And that also includes areas outside of the city too, because of the sewer districts and the water district.
Right.
Which is why, just to, to go along with your point, why they're thinking the reconstruction fund would be a good, um, use of this if we, if we don't get the insurance, because...
Other municipalities chip in.
Other municipalities chip in by the contract that they have. You have to notice them, and that's a process too, unfortunately, but at least it's better than, than the water reserves.
Yeah, that's a hundred percent.
Yeah, and again, that would all come to you, it's just they don't have a recommendation yet, because you don't know exactly what it's going to cost you, and if the insurance will pick up. So it is going to come to you.
Okay.
Okay? Councilman Lapham, uh, old, uh, old business.
Nothing to it.
Uh, Councilwoman Gooden, old business.
Yeah.
New business, Councilman Clark?
I have nothing new right now.
Uh, Councilman Downey?
Nothing new.
Councilman Landry?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just my regular winter announcements, um, is, is to the residents of the city, please keep your sidewalks shuttled as your kids walk to school in this town, it's important that these sidewalks be safe. Um, if it snows, nearby fire hikers, look it up, make sure it's shuttled out, there's a number of our firefighters are here tonight, I'm sure they'd like to help. Uh, and lastly, be careful on the ice on city-owned ponds and on the river up to Hadlands Cove, uh, takes four inches of ice to be safe. Uh, I was up in northern New York over the weekend out on the lake, and, uh, we would think up there, where it's been much colder, that the ice would be safe, and there were spots that we were concerned about, so be careful in that. Um, I'd like to congratulate Megan Egan, the new owner of Mickey Mouse Perro Shop, uh, right here in the second ward on Glen Street. Um, I'd also like to thank Warren Band, who over the years continually improved Mickey Mouse to the point where it was a destination for shoppers and a centerpiece of our downtown Glens Falls. Um, the, I'd also like to remind our downtown business owners of the importance of shoveling and sanding their sidewalks in front of their businesses, just like we're asking people to do out in our residential communities. Just as we love our likeable side, the sidewalks out in the, uh, our walkable sidewalks, our neighbors, uh, we love a walkable downtown as well, and so do the many out-of-town shoppers and diners we have. Many hands make light work, so join your neighbor, fellow business people, and help keep the downtown sidewalks clear and safe, everybody wins if you do. And lastly, welcome home, Councilwoman Gooden, glad to see you. Um, when you're out of town, Glens Falls misses you, and we lack, um, your insight on how the city should be run, so, uh, I'm glad you're doing well, I'm really happy to see you here tonight, uh, and I, I wish you well in the future.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thank you. New business, Councilwoman Palmer?
I have a question about, um, parking enforcement, because I had a constituent reach out to me with some questions, so do we have a current parking enforcement person?
No, she, uh, she resigned, I think, a week and a half ago. I think we have one, we're interviewing, uh, last week or this week, so.
Oh, okay.
She just, just resigned right around the holidays, right, maybe right before Christmas.
Right before Christmas, okay.
I believe so.
Okay. And I know we weren't enforcing parking for a while before that because of COVID and trying to give people a break.
That's right.
Okay, so the constituent reached out to me and said, you know, when you started enforcing again, I became stressed out about going downtown to go out to eat or something, because what happens if I talk for too long and I'm parked for more than two hours, or, um, and then, you know, I know we had, um, Mr. Gahn come in and Chuck Gahn and address us about the, the parking enforcement issues and the frustration of businesses from having to move their cars, and I started thinking about the fact that, well, we don't have anyone enforcing it now, have we had, um, serious problems during this time?
Yeah, we get complaints both from people who are upset because employees are parking in front of their businesses and not moving all day, and then we have people, employees that, um, employers who are complaining that we don't have places for their employers to park, and so we get, we get complaints on a regular basis, absolutely.
But I'm saying, is that something that's happened as a result of this, is that, is that increasing this week, or, or is that just, you're saying that happens all the time?
Uh, it's, it's pretty, um, regular, so I don't, I don't think I've gotten in the last two weeks since, since, um, she's resigned, um, an increase, I, I don't think so, especially during the holidays, but, um, and remember, she's only enforcing Monday to Friday, nine to five, so, and only in our downtown, um, area, so, uh, no, I, I don't think so.
But there was enforcement after the last year.
That's right, there's been enforcement for, that's correct. And, and then we, and before we, she started handing out tickets, we did three months of warnings.
Yes, I know, and I know it's not new, but I guess I just, what occurred to me is, we al, we almost have data for a study. We, we had a period where we didn't enforce it, we had a period where we renewed enforcement, and now we're not enforcing it, and I'm just curious if we could look at that and see, did the enforcement have the intended, desired effect or not? Considering the fact that we have had businesses reach out to us or frustrated about it, and that I have had constituents reach out to me, I would just be interested in asking that question and getting those answers.
Sure.
That's what I wanted to bring up. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. Councilman Laffam?
Uh, I'm going to be on January 25th writing an cyclathon, which is a indoor, uh, cycling, uh, like marathon kind of thing, and it's to raise money for the Common Roots Foundation, which, uh, you know, provides a lot of, uh, a lot of benefits to, uh, charities in, in Glens Falls and in the region, so I just wanted to, uh, let everybody know, and if anybody wants to sponsor me, to see me at the meeting.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gooden, new business.
Uh, well, as we all know, it's that time of the year again for the MLK celebration, and that will be this Sunday. Uh, we start at three o'clock here at City Hall, where we'll be greetings, and then about 3:30, we will march over to Christ Church, where we'll have a program that will start promptly at four. And our programs now are all of, about the students, is living the dreams through the arts, and we have all the different schools come, the children do the program, and it's really grown, it's really, really outstanding, I can't speak on it enough, it's really good. And, um, the NAACP do sponsor it, but it is a community event, so, um, uh, the community is invol, is involved in, um, the program A to Z, and so it's, it's a great day, you will not be disappointed, so we look forward to seeing everyone there this Sunday.
Thank you. Um, the only new business I have is that this Saturday, I believe at 10:00 a.m., is a women's march, um, that starts at, um, Crandall Library, um, please come and support the group that's, that's there, I believe it's being put on, uh, focused this year by, um, Kate Austin Aban is the organizer, um, and then on Sunday, Martin Luther King March, and then next Thursday is the State of the City, um, the Thursday, the 23rd, at 5:00 p.m. I hope to see you all there. Um, we now are done with new business, and we go to public comment. Anybody from the, uh, from the public like to address the council? Peter, would you, uh, is there anybody online? No?
Yes.
Uh, would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn?
Uh, redoing.
No, uh, we're, we're not going into executive session, um, we, so the union, uh, firefighters' union, um, gave us, uh, some information, um, they could not, uh, calculate the, uh, so we could get exact numbers on what, what the council resolution was, um, I asked Deputy Chief Modar to calculate to the best of our ability what those, what those values were, and we sent it back to the union, and, uh, they're looking at it with their attorney, and when they come back, we'll, as soon as they do, we'll, we'll, um, we'll either go into executive session or, um, or have it on the agenda. Okay?
Motion to adjourn, then.
All in favor?
Aye.
We stand adjourned, thank you very much.